One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, um. I'll need a motion to approve the agenda. All right, come on. Second?
I'll play it.
John? Any discussion or questions on that? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. All right, looks like there's no public comment tonight. Five point O consent agenda, I'll need a motion. Is that you Ben?
Mm-hmm.
Motion to accept, okay, and a second? I'll second that. Okay, is there any discussion or questions on that consent agenda? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. Okay, communications report six point one is Mr. John Archer. You're up.
Perfect.
Yeah, you're up.
Thank you. Well, maybe I'll start by introducing myself, so my name is John Archer. I'm a partner at Schlatter Wetter Company. Worked on your audit in the past, took a little break from it. And then the regular partner that you work with Molly Thompson is retiring, so stepping back into working with you again. So happy to be working on your audit again. My staff has been history from probably five, six years ago, seven years ago when I worked on it before. So it wasn't too hard to jump back into it. Normally you'd be talking to Ashi Macher tonight, and you will likely continue to be talking with Ashi Macher at your meetings, but she had a conflict tonight, so. So you're all stuck with me tonight, I guess. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna walk through your audit results, and we've got a summary that you all have. We'll walk through the summary, if you have questions, you can feel free to interrupt me as I go. Otherwise, if you wanna wait till the end, that's fine too. And if you wanna take a deeper dive, then we can do that too, but we'll kind of keep it high level for now. Sound good? All right. So we're gonna start out by talking about the audit opinion itself. Because if you think about an audit and what we do, what you're actually hiring us to do is give our opinion on whether we think your financial statements are correct or not. And so that's what we're doing here. We're saying based on the procedure we perform, whether it's asking a lot of questions, doing some things analytically, so looking at your numbers compared to what we'd expect with the budget, what we'd expect with last year, what we'd expect compared to other similar sized schools, or doing detailed testing, so things like looking at your bank statements, your invoices, your remittances that you received from the state of Minnesota. We do all that to try to prove out your numbers. And so at the end of all this, all the procedures we performed, what we're doing is we're expressing an unmodified opinion, which is called, similar to what you'd think of like a clean opinion, so that's us saying, based on our procedures, we think your numbers look good. So if we jump to the next page, this next page is actually not so much about the numbers of the district, it's more about how the audit itself went. And so this page is our opportunity to report to you all at the school board if we had trouble during the audit. And if you look at this page, there's not much on here, that's because we really had no difficulties performing the audit. So things came to us quickly, your staff were quick to respond to our questions. Things were accurate when they were sent to us, we had no red flags, and there were no unusual transactions when we were going through the audit. Everything looked really good from what was presented to us. One thing I wanna highlight on this page though is the very bottom. So there's a statement that says that we adopted a new standard, GASB one oh one compensated absences. And that's not GASB one oh one as in this is like the entry level college class for government accounting standards board. It's just standard number one hundred one. So what it does is it changes, tweaks how you account for paid time off, paid leave, sick leave, all of your compensated absences. So under the old model, what you would do for the school is you would accrue those if they were gonna get paid out. Under the new model, you might have benefits that are accrued or in someone's bank, but maybe wouldn't ever necessarily get paid out if they left. We have to include all of those liabilities in our calculation now, so it increases liability. The other thing that we have to do now is calculate out what the payroll taxes would be on those if they were to be used, and what the para and TRA contributions would be on those if they'd be used. So it increases your liability this year, it just changes the way your compensated absences are accounted for. So something I wanted to highlight really quick. Looking at internal control related items next. So three things that we're reporting this year, and these are the same three that we've reported for a number of years. And so the first is related to audit adjustments. So we did propose some adjustments, nothing that's unusual for your district, and nothing that's different than what we proposed in the past. Serugation of duties is the next that we're recording, so that's saying that because you have limited staff in your accounting function, things aren't separated out like they would be in a perfect world, and so that's something we have to highlight. And then the last is that we prepare your financial statements for you. So in the world of school district auditing, I've heard this referred to as the big three before, because it's so common. So very common for a district your size, common for a district much larger than yours too. One of the things that we look at when we're performing the audit is compliance with Minnesota statutes. So the state auditor actually has a hit list of different things that they want us to check for, ranging from things like whether you have enough collateral pledged on your bank account, so dollars over FDIC limit. We look at things like conflicts of interest, whether you're spending your dollars where you should be for a public purpose, we look at contracting and bidding and a number of other things. So we're happy to say this year that we had no findings with that. So based on the procedures we performed, no Minnesota legal compliance findings. So we're gonna look at the numbers coming up here next, but before we do, I like to take a second to look at your enrollment, because so many of the dollars that you receive, especially general education aid, are dependent on how many students you're serving. And if you look at the last three years, you're really pretty quite, quite level in your enrollment. There's been a little bit of fluctuation between twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five and the grade levels, but in total, enrollment's actually identical, seven hundred forty three EDMs per year. And if we look at the next page, we're looking at the general fund. And the format we're going to follow is, we're gonna look at things really broadly, and then we'll hone in into some detail from there. So looking at it really broadly first, you had a good year in the general fund, so your fund balance increased five hundred fourteen thousand dollars. You had budgeted two hundred ten thousand, and your twenty twenty four increase was a hundred eighty three thousand. So a nice increase compared to those, both of those years. You'll see on that page that both your revenues higher than last year and higher than the budget. Expenditures are maybe slightly higher than last year, but lower than budget. And then there's the line for other sources and uses where you have a negative eighty nine thousand dollars. That's almost entirely a transfer from the general fund to your community service fund. Looking at revenue next in a little bit more detail, you were looking at your revenue broken up by broad funding source. In your school is like most where the majority of your revenues are coming in with state sourced funds. And so if you were to drill down on that section in particular, a little bit further, what you'd find is that, well, if you look at it really quick, you'll see state sourced funds came at nine point seven million dollars. Budget was nine point five two million dollars. And looking at the detail further, you'd see general education aid was higher by about a hundred twenty seven thousand. Special education was higher by about a hundred sixty three thousand. Other areas that maybe I wanna point out quick, property tax levy, that's increased. It's up from your budget and from last year, just due to an increase in your levy dollars received. And then federal sourced funds, you'll see that actually decreased from last year, and it decreased from your budget. Most of that's related to the drop off of your S R funding, so that, that's essentially over at this point now. If we look at the spending in your general fund next, you'll notice if you look at the first six or so columns, from admin all the way over to instructional support services, all of these numbers are really very close between your budget and your actual activity, and your budget and last year's activity. So you've done a really good job of staying within your budget in these categories. Pupil support services is next. You'll see that's increased from last year by about a hundred twelve thou- or a hundred twelve thousand dollars, almost entirely related to transportation costs, that's what's driving that increase. If you look at site and building, the next column over, you'll see that there's less activity in twenty five versus twenty four. That's because of the flood remediation costs that you had in the prior year. And other area that I maybe wanna highlight quick is capital outlay. So capital outlay, you have two hundred twenty seven, almost two hundred twenty eight thousand dollars of capital outlay. Included in that line, you had bought some iPads and techno- technology equipment, but also walking path and some other outdoor improvements, some of those are funded actually by those S R dollars. Looking at the cash balance in the general fund, you'll see there's been an increase over the last three years in cash. But also you'll notice on this page that there is a decrease in twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. Those are intentional spend downs that you had made, so we're gonna ignore that for a second. But your cash balances increased over the last three years. This year's increase, there's no numbers on this page, so I'll tell you what the numbers are. So this year's cash balance in the general fund is three point seven million dollars. Last year was three point two five million dollars, so you're up both four hundred fifty thousand dollars in the general fund this year. And looking at your fund balance next, this, this graph looks actually really similar to your cash balance. So your fund balance, in this what we're looking at here is your unassigned fund balance, so the dollars that are available just for your discretionary spending, compared to your annual budget. So as a percentage of your budget, you have a fund balance policy on what you want that target to be, or the minimum to be, which is twenty percent. This year, your fund balance as a percentage of your budget was twenty three point six percent, so you're higher than that. And you'll see it increased from twenty four to twenty five as well, went from twenty one point three to twenty three point six, most, almost entirely because of your increase in fund balance this year, but that was offset a little bit by your expenses being a little higher this year too. There's a lot going on on this page, so we're not gonna get too far into the weeds here, but what we're looking at is your, your total fund balance broken up into broad categories. So what we're looking at is unassigned fund balance, which is what we just looked at on the page before. And then fund balances with a number of restrictions. So two point eight million dollars in your unassigned fund balance, eight hundred twelve in total restricted for various categories. Your restricted fund balance increased this year by about two hundred twenty five thousand dollars. That's partly due to S R funding, and so you have received S R funding. And it's better to use those dollars while you can, rather than using them for restrict- restricted funds. So if you think of the hierarchy on when you wanna spend your dollars, you wanna use it in the funding, that's gonna go away first. Then you wanna use it in restricted to use that up, and then unassigned is the, the catchall, that's, that's the last resort. So that, that really was driven up those restricted funds.
When you're talking about this fund.
Yeah.
The fund balance, I don't hear you pronouncing the D as much, so it sounds like fun balance. But when you explain it, it's a lot less fun.
Yeah, I know, I know. I'll emphasize the D.
Okay, I just wanna.
I mean, the unassigned fund.
Yeah.
Funded balance is kinda like.
Cause at first I was like, this sounds great.
The unassigned fund balance, it is kinda like the fun balance.
Sorry, sorry. I dig it.
I like that. Remaining governmental funds, so what we're looking at on this page is the debt service fund and the building construction fund. Debt service has not a lot to say on that fund, because when you issue your debt, it's all pre-prescribed, you know what your levy is going to be. You know what your, your state building aid's generally going to be, you know what your principal and interest payments will be on the debt, and it just kinda takes care of itself over time. This fund had a decrease in fund balance of almost eighteen thousand dollars. If you were to look at this compared to last year, you'd see property taxes have increased a little bit, and your state building bond aid has increased as well. And the expenditures you'll see have increased from last year as well, because your twenty twenty four A and B debt had its first principal payments during the last year. Building construction fund, this fund is almost entirely capital outlay for your athletic complex. There's some revenues coming in, these are just investment earnings on unspent proceeds that you have on the project. Food service, food service had an increase in fund balance of sixteen thousand seven hundred forty five dollars. If we were to look at the detail on this, you'd see the biggest changes are that you have some capital purchases. So you had bought some ovens, some other kitchen equipment in this fund. And then community service fund had an increase in fund balance of twenty seven thousand five hundred twenty five dollars. This fund, if you remember back when I was talking about the general fund, had a transfer coming in of, in this case, you can see the exact number, ninety thousand dollars. That's down from what was transferred in, in last year. So last year, three hundred ten thousand was transferred, so you've reduced how much needs to be transferred into this fund. And that twenty seven thousand dollar fund balance at the end of the year, making sure I'm catching my knees when I say.
You can pass however you want.
Yeah, all right, well, we're gonna go back to fund balance.
That's all I can hear you saying.
Yeah. It's almost entirely school readiness dollars, so it's, it's set aside for a specific use. Cash in these funds. Debt service fund has a cash balance that decreased slightly, that cash balance at the end of the year is one point one million dollars. The food service fund has, is relatively steady, that cash balance is two hundred ninety five thousand dollars. And the community service fund has a cash balance of a hundred twenty six thousand dollars. And the building construction fund's not on this page, just because that fund has a lot of activity, and if we were to put that on, it really skews the scale of the, of the chart. That has a cash balance of four hundred fourteen thousand at the end of the year. So if we look at the next few pages, this is looking at the school district as a whole. So we've taken all of the funds, we've combined them together, we've added in the value of your capital assets, your building, and we've added in the amounts owed on your long-term debt. And so looking at the assets first, you'll see assets in total have decreased slightly from twenty four to twenty five. The current assets in particular decreased, they've gone from fifteen million to ten million dollars. That's almost entirely from construction activity this year. So that's expected that it decreases. The long-term assets have increased, and that's almost entirely from capitalizing the work done so far on the athletic complex. And looking at liabilities next, you'll see liabilities have also decreased from twenty four to twenty five. Current liabilities in particular, they've gone from two point six seven million dollars to one point four million dollars. That decrease is almost entirely construction cables that you had last year, that you didn't have this year. Long-term debt, you'll see that's decreased slightly, primarily from your debt payments, but it's a little bit misleading, because if you remember that GASB one oh one standard I mentioned at the beginning, that comp- those compensated absences are buried in that line too, so that increased it a little bit. And then the remaining two lines, O P E V is post employment health benefits, and then pension liability. Those numbers are actually determined by an actuary, and so they tell us what the numbers should be. We do some test work on the census, that information that's sent to the actuary. Those have both decreased, the O P E V is relatively similar to last year, but decreased slightly. Pension liability's decreased more. Your contributions haven't fluctuated significantly, it's just a change in actuarial assumptions. And if we look at debt on the next page, you'll see the debt landing in twenty twenty four, the new project, and then you can see the effects of your first principal payment on that debt in twenty twenty five. So debt at the end of the year is totals forty point nine seven million dollars. The next page is where you would hear me talk about new standards coming for next year, and you'll see that page is missing, because I'm happy to say that there are actually no new standards coming for next year. Everyone looks really disappointed. Well, we're all really happy with how the audit went. Your team's really good to work with, really good to respond to our questions. Happy to be working with you all again too. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I do have a question. So vocally, but also statewide, you hear about problems with finances in school and. And, and I'm curious, how do some of those happen? Do they not do an audit like this, or can things pass through and get, get missed, or I'm just, I'm curious?
Yeah, that's a good question. So in Minnesota, actually every school district is prepared to have an audit, so it's, it's not a matter of not having audits done. And so when you talk about problems, there's a few things that my mind goes to. One is financial problems, so, so financial struggles, and the other is fraudulent type activity. So financial struggles, what we tend to see is people ignoring fund balance. And so if you think back to that fund balance slide where we were looking at your fund balance as a percentage of your year's expenditures, that's a, are actually a really important slide, because that's a, one of the best parameters of your school's financial health. So what we see with schools that are, and actually I've been working with one right now, that's in statutory operating debt, because they ignored that slide, and they, they kept having decreases in their fund balance. And it, it's a matter of maybe not watching the budget, not ignoring the fund balance, and sometimes not wanting to make tough decisions when fund balance is decreasing. Fraud, on the other hand, that could be from a lot of things. So we've, I've seen frauds in schools before. Probably the biggest area of risk or exposure is related to student activities. Because if you think about student activities, there's a lot of cash. Sometimes controls are maybe not quite as strong as the rest of the district operations. And so that's, that's the area that we do tend to see the most fraudulent related activity from. So I guess the, the advice there, and I'm, I'm not saying your school's not doing this, I'm talking more in generalities, is to keep an eye on, on those cash transactions, those student activities.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you, John.
Yeah.
Okay, move on to Todd Burkin.
So, before Todd starts, so this will be the first time, so we hope to get better. So if there's something missing, so you got your board packets earlier this week with that data, if there's something more, just send me an email or call me, then, then we'll include it for all of them, but whatever we put in one, we want them all to kind of resemble. So I hope that information was relevant to try and put a lot of time in what you're about to see in here, and put it all that together. So sorry to rise, wanted to make sure.
It was nice to get it earlier.
Yes, it was, yeah.
That was a tough start, we hope to do better, I mean, next one we have.
We don't even know how good that's. No idea.
But it, it is our, our first time, so there are things that you wanna see additions, you want us to make, Judd and I will serve you that, and we'll add that into it. So I think though we have some stuff in gym first, oh no, excuse me. Oh, took him out, let's see after me.
Oh.
That's you, okay. So I think you got kind of a, a data deck that was sent to you, so I just kinda goes through, and these will look a little different with each class, depending on what kinds of assessments that they have. So in, in your data deck, if you go to the next slide, it starts out with just kind of who we are. So you get a look at the number of students we have, the ratio, the ethnicity, anything from special needs to E L, M L services. I did add one more on the bottom there, we just got our data back for our parent teacher conferences. Fifth grade did lead, the elementary with ninety point four percent, eighty seven percent overall. So a really good night for us, always fun to get that many families and get a chance to talk about the good things that we're doing here at McCray. Really proud of the attendance slide, so ninety seven percent for fifth grade, and that's way above what the state average is. So, and that's gonna be pretty similar with most grades, but again, that fifth grade class has been pretty good. Nope, you can go ahead and slide through, so you're fine. Some of the other da- data in that deck kinda pointed out some of the things that we're really proud of, and I won't go through all those slides, because you already have them. But a hundred percent of our kids are proud to be, you know, a member of the McCray Elementary School. High percentages that have friends at school, feel like they belong, have a connection with their teacher, all those things in the high nineties, which are things that we take a lot of pride in. So I'll kinda walk through the slideshow with you, kinda get a look at those classes. One of the things in the background that's, that's a really neat kind of tradition of fifth grade, is they do kind of a, a big poster board about them. So they'll hang those up as a way to kinda introduce themselves to the class. A lot of these kids have been together for a long time, you know, sometimes in the same class, but definitely in the same grade. But there's always some movement, so it's nice to have a new student that gets a chance to kind of talk about who they are, what their kind of favorite activities are, you can see that in the background. Did we already get the next one? Go ahead and, we might've gotten through all three classes, let's see. Did it one more?
I s- I skipped over this one, did you get that, did you get a blind check?
Yeah.
Yep, go ahead. Or click, yep. And we'll get it figured out, but we had a Blanchett, and we have, it just be a slide of Mrs. Van Nys' class outside in there. Best McCray Day pride stuff, that would be a common, a tradition on Friday, so a class picture with a lot of blue and some green in, in there, so. As we get that booted up, I'll start kinda going through the script, and then we can jump right back in. So what, what, what we're looking at is a future class of twenty thirty three. So I wanna take some time to, to share some things that make this group special, and to focus on the elementary experience here at McCray. The fifth grade is the final year in our elementary building, as we get them ready, can prepare them both academically, socially, and emotionally for that transition into middle school. And we work hard to build strong connections and relationships with our students, and just as importantly between students and, and each other. Can we go back one more? Maybe that's it. Can I just go back? One more, one more, right there, all right, now, now we'll get it going. All right, so we, we use a P D I S kind of reward system. So that's a way that we can kind of recognize the positive behavior and kind of model the Wolverine way. So we get pride tickets throughout the week, they all go to a big hopper, and then each Friday we draw one of those names. So there was one of our, our fifth grade winners, we, we take a picture, they get a little prize bag, and we post that on our Facebook page ads as well. We also have teachers that use an individual incentive, if you go to the next slide, this is Blanchett, uses Blanchett Bucks. So I got a picture of some of those kids that are sitting pretty good right now. They can earn those for good behavior, they can earn those for just being kind, sometimes they get a bonus for a really good assignment or test score. And then every so often, the stores open, and they get to go and do a little shopping, they can buy a little Nick Natch, sometimes candy, they can, can use it for that. So those are some of our big Blanchett Bucks winners, and we use those in the Riley classes as, as well. All right, now we get to our character ed. So part of that social and emotional learning is, is character education, and that is done by Mrs. Frickie or by Drew in our fifth grade. So this takes place one day a week during that social studies time. So they've got four social studies classes each week, and then the classes rotate. One of those four will be a kind of a character ed time, just to talk about what it means to be a good friend, how to overcome struggles. We'll go through kind of the P, the R, the I, the D, the E, we'll see that just a, a little bit as well. And then a little bit later, I think this is our thirty third year, we'll have their classes that will take place. So we'll get someone from the county that will come in and run those classes one day each week for twelve weeks with a final graduation that will take place in the spring, so kids are always pretty excited about that. And that should get us to our video clip. Just focusing on what pride means to them.
Positive is when you're linked to your other peers, or, or stands for respectful. Respectful means that you kind of tell others and treat others the way you wanna be treated. I have the letter I, I stand for integrity. Integrity, integrity means being something, somebody that somebody can trust and be honest. Letter D, D means determined. D means brave and never giving up. The letter E, E stands for excellence.
E stands for excellence. Excellence means always being good and achieving dreams.
I'm involved in all baseball and basketball. My favorite activity is football.
Favorite memory of McCray is when the girls won second in the state championship.
Friends in my crowd go every time.
My favorite thing about McCray is my friends, the new building and staff. They treat me very nicely and I support them.
The volleyball.
Alright. This year, one of the new things that we did with curriculum is social studies. So you know, we did math three years ago. We're in year three now. We did our EDLA last year. And this year we got some new social studies curriculum that aligns with the Minnesota standards. And it's kind of a, a neat format. It's in a newspaper edition. So each unit, they get kind of the, oh, a, a different packet that they can kind of read through. And hopefully it'll pop up there and you'll get a chance to see it. Maybe back one more. Get it forward. Well, maybe it's buckled in there. There it is, just kind of out of whack. But so you, you can kind of, kind of see the, the context of it. Again, it kind of helps them with history, citizenship, a little bit civics in there, geography as well. So right there, they're studying some of the, the regional tribes of the, the United States. So my students, it's their own kind of mini mag- magazine and they can follow along on board as well. Sorry, Greg, now we gotta go back a little bit. And I, I won't read that slide to you, but you've heard, heard me talk about Wind Time, something that we're really proud of. We're still kind of working our, our way through it to make sure we're getting as much differentiation as we can. Takes a lot of work. We've got a class of twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six kids to make sure that each student is getting kind of what they need. But that's what Wind Time is. So you want to focus on what skills they have and what skills that we need to help them specifically. And we can get a chance to do that by breaking them into some smaller groups. So if we look through the next slides, you'll see how some of that works. So they might go to a separate phonics lesson. See that on the left where Mrs. Deacon gets a chance to work with some, some of those skills from kindergarten all the way on up through fifth grade. You can see some small group instruction, kind of a student led on the bottom. And we'll also see some student, some teacher-led instruction up on top with some parent push-in. Yeah, so you get a chance to take that outside of the classroom. So there's an example, fifth grade did, did a reading unit where they went out and read to other classes. So classes would sign up and then they had about a fifteen-minute time where they went out and met with those kids, kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and just read stories to them. So a great way to connect with those young readers, but also great chance to practice their own reading skills. So that was a fun activity for us that kind of paced them all on their own kind of skill level. Alright, you can go to the next one. And of, of course, school is more than just academics. We believe in creating the love for learning and the love for school. Events like our fall and winter parties, Reed to Crow, field trips, school assemblies help build community and pride in being a Wolverine. So there's one of the classes after our fall, fall party slash Halloween party. We had a chance to go in the gym and kind of do a parade. So all of our classes got to march around, kind of pull off their costumes, wide range. And really impressive how many kids get so excited and dress up for these days. And then they have a fall party that follows it. So they get snacks and then they have a variety of activities that go along with it as well. I just like that pickle eating pickle. Is that it or not? It's a great picture for him. And then as, as we saw in that video clip, we offer a lot of activities here. You saw that over half of our kids were involved in something just this fall. So whether that's, that's football or a chance to be involved in other activities, guitar lessons, community ed, we're going to have Math Masters starting pretty soon. So just a wide variety of things for kids to really kind of dive into and excel into. And then of course, we have, you know, our, I'll go back one more. We have our STEAM and music and FIED rotation. We did change that this year. Those that have had kids that have gone through it, it used to be on a week one, week two, week three cycle. Needed a Captain Crunch decoder ring to figure out what exact class you had. And the downside was that you only get to see your kids for, you saw them a lot, but for one week. And then you had two weeks off and you saw them a lot for one week. So time-wise, we didn't gain any, but now we see our kids every week. We see them twice each week. So we have music class twice a week with every grade. We have STEAM class or science class every week, twice, twice each week. So both STEAM and music are twice a week. They rotate back and forth, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And then we have FIED every day. So every student is active and moving every day. And we take a lot of pride in, in that. And we talk about P D I, yeah, P D I S and kind of managing behaviors. Being active is a big part of that. So we want to continue to keep those kids active because FIED and recess are the biggest deterrents to disruptive behavior. So the more we can get those kids moving, the better we're going to see them in, in the classroom, that academic that goes with academics. So all of these experiences work together to make McCray Elementary a place where students feel connected, supported, and inspired to be their best. And that is the class of two thousand and thirty-three.
What, what?
What questions or comments? Little favors, little exceptions.
I was just gonna kind of like, just looking at, you know, one concern we've had is just like M C A scores. And it looks like this class from third grade to fourth grade between math and reading, there was on this a shift in a lot, which is improvement. So that's good to see. And so hopefully that can
Yeah.
continue. I mean, that's good.
Yeah. And I, I think the, the biggest part to having success is just having some consistency as we move through it. So I think we've got some, some good things in place and we'll start to see some growth starting, starting soon, so.
I think it's wise to put physical education too as a, as a priority for day, day-to-day. There's tons of research that show that, but a lot of times schools cut those programs really quickly thinking like, well, we can't fit in the budget or this, that. But it, it really is important for especially younger kids.
Yes, I agree.
Alright, well, thank you, Todd.
Yep, and you know, we don't want to put you on the spot tonight. So as you have a chance to re, to reflect and think about this, if things pop up, does it take a second message? Or we can keep making a bet.
Alright, alright, Ed.
Yep, so as you know, I was really excited about this change because our focus is truly those students in that grade, but also academics. So you can all read off the reports, whatever they put. But the focus now for every class, you'll get that data deck. So that's important. So if you want something for every class in there, we don't mind changing. We, we use something from another district. We borrow it only because I knew that's what they did. So that doesn't have to be the McCray way. But there was a lot of data in there and I was so proud of Todd because we talked about the concept of the social emotional health of our students. And that's a big part. How do they feel when they're here? How do they feel when they leave here? And it really showed in this class that they really love coming to school. Their attendance shows it. The grades will come, the academic piece, as you said, when we get consistency. But the students want to be here and, and that was truly nice to see. Hopefully, as we go forward, the other classes, my guess is middle school will take a dip. They're middle schoolers. And then as their seniors, you're going to see a high graduation rate. So it was very impressive when Todd and I and the whole team reviewed the data and it just was evident. So going forward, another keynote, as you know, retention is big in keeping, getting people to want to come to McCray. We have a mentor mentee program for our new teachers. And we were recently asked to present. So Judd and Todd put some data together and, and Judd was a presenter for, for that group. So not only are other people wanting mentor-mentee programs, but they're looking at McCray for ideas. That's what's working and our checklists are good. It was just evident what we're doing here, what was being built on and we're going to keep going. It's been very successful. So that was exciting that they were asked to present. Judd did a fantastic job. We have the musical coming this week. And as we go, Greg's going to start flicking the slides. But you know, we had a great end of the fall season. The football team, you know, they won their first playoff game. It was at Cambie. As you can see, they were successful. And then our volleyball team made it to the subsection finals. As you can see at S M S U, that nice college has that big video board. So you could see we, that was the, the semifinal game we won over one of our rivals. That was a big fun night. So that was fun there. And then we have Reiman Construction finished the paving this fall. And you can just see, I know the grass isn't there yet, but you can see the nice job, the arches. They did extra. If you see the second picture, that's the shot put pits. Ideally, they're, they're, originally due to money, we didn't go all the way over. But thanks to Reiman, it goes all the way. They've been great to work with. It's all, you know, finished now. The fence people, hopefully will get that in soon. And then next you will have the, the winter storage facility or the storage shed out there at the far end. But you can see the, the nice job they did. So that was thanks to Reiman. We want to make sure we thank them and very good at getting back to us, especially to Jim. I didn't make any calls, so that was nice. Okay, Greg? Okay, oh, we had two all-state Coaches Association volleyball players. That's Brielle and Emma. So they got that award, I believe it was last week. So wanted to make sure you guys knew about that. We also had one of the largest craft pairs I attended in our community and in our building. So they took over almost every part of the school. There was people all over, but there was thousands of people that were brought into the three communities and had access to a lot of nice things going on. Palmer Bus, the CEO, did her yearly stop-by. And then what's the, do we have the next picture, Greg? There's some excitement. Okay, we can, we had a visitor and we have one tomorrow. But I think this is the visitor. You can play it. So you can see from that that he was here over two hours. And I would say in two hours, I might have said ten minutes worth of ideas totally student-led. We had five students from a variety of grades. Those students looked like our school. And he was totally impressed. His aide had already sent a nice thank you note to how much time and how much he valued what he learned here. The walking path was a hit. The FFA field and work with the hydroponics was a hit. But I think the key was we provide peace at the end and they, it was just free flow dialogue. And that was very impactful. I just sat in the back and the students, they just talked about life, what they liked here, how did he get to be where he was? And it was just a great time. We got one tomorrow again and then next Tuesday. So they'll be here and Todd was great. He read a book that Joe Maurer and Pat Schmidt wrote together about being kind. And that was first grade and I will go to another first grade tomorrow. This is
Paul's class.
Yep, this tomorrow. So and the students can either, the tour guys can go in and be part of it or they can sit out in the hall. And they all went in and stood behind and were very active. They took a photo. So very exciting so that, you know, the people that control the laws and the money at the big level can at least know that we're maximizing everything we get. And the students value, they were so good. The one student, we went into the theater and I've never learned so much about a theater in my life. She was just on fire. She was so excited about the theater because she had lived through the gym, presenting in the gym, not having a green room and the garage, the storage. And they all had their little stories and they all just, all five of them, nobody was quiet. There's a ninth grader in the group. There's three seniors, the same groups coming back if their teachers will let them out. So we're hopeful that that will just continue to grow. But the nice part of it was it was student-led. They even, Ryder sophomore talked all about Franny and the impact she's been having. And he got down on his knees and knew that, that Franny's part of our staff. So just the little things we've added, so it was just great. So we're excited about the next two. And you know, you can, welcome to come. And I'll let you know if the fourth person, now that the shutdown's over, or hopefully soon over, that she'll make a, a date for when she'll come to.
Who is it that's coming tomorrow?
Tomorrow is Baker, is it? Baker will be here tomorrow and then the other will be Lang. He'll be here in a week.
Oh, okay.
So
This was the gentleman from on the video reminding of his name. They're going to ask, that's right.
Yep, and he just posted that TikTok on his website, I think over the weekend or just recently. So our TikToks, since we've started this, get a lot of views. So one, a couple are already over a thousand. So it's just, and it's all upbeat and fun and the musical's on there, the latest one. And they almost have two thousand and they're the newest. So let's keep putting, we get pictures, we'll put them together and Greg and I go through them. Alright, and now the last one, Greg. This was our elementary gym festival with Principal Bertrand. Well, it went a little short, but you can just see the concept. We try to find fun music and so that's pretty much, I'm open if you have any questions. The rest of it you got earlier in the week, so.
Everybody got anything? Okay, alright, well, thanks for that. Six point two is committee reports. We don't have anything there. Six point three, board discussion is, the first one is school start date for the twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year. And that is because Labor Day is late. So we are allowed to start early. So do we need a resolution on this or what do we need to do here?
You guys asked for, to talk about it tonight and the resolution will be the next.
It will be, okay, okay.
That way you have time to talk with people.
Okay.
When we have the opportunity to start early, what just, what are the parameters of that?
So it would, we can just, however you guys set it. So ideally, we
I mean, like, can we start August fifteenth or does it have to be after September first or after September first?
Yeah, so we, we had talked about going, some people had talked about going Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So we get all the meetings, all the stuff done and then they could still have Friday and the long weekend and then start with classes right away on that Tuesday.
What is the date?
Does that still allow us to finish at the end of May, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. That happens the next two years that that Labor Day is late.
Have we done that in the past?
Well, we started early because of the building project.
I think, I think one of those years
It might have been.
It might have been really late, but we were already early, so it didn't matter.
So, yeah, so looking at the calendar, Labor Day, Monday is the seventh. So Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday is first, second, third, leading up to the weekend.
Just maybe keep in mind, what does, or what were the parameters for the kids that have stepped on the state fair?
Yeah.
They're there all the way up to Liberty.
We've, we've experienced them before.
Okay.
Parents can just call them and and we have a lot of students already on campus, starting to vote the second week of August already.
Yeah, that's, well, it is nice to be done at the end of May too.
Yeah.
June tenth doesn't sound so good, so, yeah, whatever.
Just to be clear, you're talking about having students here on Tuesday the second? That's great. And the teachers would be
Tuesday the first.
Oh, yeah.
First, second, third.
Yeah.
And you could go through Friday. I just heard some discussion about still giving the long weekend. And you guys would have all your meetings done in those three days. So we could actually hit the ground running after.
Yeah, I like that, the Friday is an off day.
Yeah. Yeah, I think so. Right, nice long weekend, last hurrah from summer there, so, yeah. So we can put that on for next.
So it'll be on the agenda next month?
If you guys would like it, yep, you tell us.
It's gonna clarify, um, legally you can't start before September first, is that? Unless there's some stipulation of September first is the.
Normally it's Labor Day.
Sure.
But, uh, yeah, now it has, I sent to those house files.
Yeah.
Uh, but it has to be, if we had construction project, we can, but we don't.
Sure.
So we would just approve starting first, but then the principals would still put the actual calendar together and that should be what, or we would approve, excuse me.
Yes, yeah, great.
But at first, we gotta just let everybody know we're gonna start before.
Maybe hear some feedback now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
agenda, that'd be discussed.
Still all in September.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's still in September, great. Okay, well, let's just put that on for next month and get the ball rolling and that. Okay, then, um, oh, the next thing I've got under that board discussion is a special meeting time. I'd like to do a special meeting to discuss what we went over with Amy at MSBA, that little, um, training session she put on for us. I think what we need to do is get together and nail down what we want Mr. Home to be working on as, so we can then schedule a future, um, evaluation. But he needs to know what that evaluation is gonna be about. So I think we may need to do that. So if we can pull out our calendars, our calendars, I guess, and see what's gonna work. And I know it's busy time of year now, yeah, you're past September, yeah. And I'm guessing evenings are still better for people, right?
Is this one of those things that we have to post for two weeks?
Um, we have to post three, four days, seventy-two hours. Yeah, yeah. And I mean, I can't imagine it taking too long. Um, we just have to all kind of get ourselves on the same page and decide what, what we want to use for evaluation questions or issues. I mean, do you think we can do it? Probably not, I don't, November yet's getting.
The twenty-fourth, that six related, that one we just said, negotiations.
Oh, I didn't mind with that. That's a Monday, right?
Yeah.
Start there.
The twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth.
I could do that.
I wouldn't be able to do the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, and possibly the twenty-sixth.
Okay, those are all, those three, okay.
But maybe we all don't need to be there either because it might be really hard this time.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at, yeah.
Wednesday nights are all off for me, which is good.
So the following Monday, you're gonna do.
December first, December.
First.
I'm pretty open to December.
What about that December first?
December first would work for me, I think.
Doctor Gardner's doing a CPR class that night, so I won't be there.
So that does not work for you? I guess it doesn't have to be Monday, though.
Tuesdays work really well for me. I'll make whatever work, but.
Yeah, okay.
I'm pretty full.
The second, I'm open for the second. December second?
Yeah, okay.
We can come watch you. Oh, oh, oh. Just wear your retardant.
Or with the ninth or Tuesday's day?
Um, it just depends, yeah. I won't, the second, I won't be able to.
Well, the eighth is, uh, the next regular meeting. Could we do it before that?
Before the meeting?
Yeah.
How long do you think we would need?
I don't know, two, one.
Yeah, don't you think?
That would work for me.
Do we have that truth and taxation that day?
No, start that at eight.
Well, that start at six, right, okay. So we could still do five o'clock. Okay, if that works for everybody, let's do that. We're already here.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so.
Three, three.
Yeah, was it eight?
Yeah, I did December.
All right, good. Okay, then what have we got here? Seven point O, business items, okay. Seven point one is to approve the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five audited financial statements. I need a motion.
I'll make that motion to approve the financial statement.
Okay, Carmel, second?
Second.
That was you, Deb?
Yeah.
Right, any discussion or questions on that? Right, if that's in favor of approving the twenty-four, twenty-five audited financial statement, say aye. Aye, aye, if it was opposed, nay. Right, that carries. Okay, seven, point two, it's a resolution to accept donations. And those donations are the donation of the twenty-one eighty Foundation donor board by twenty-one eighty, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Donation of proceeds from the Looney Luthers to community ed and the donation of eleven trees, um, for the football field for Highland Memorial. So we'll need a motion. All right, Nicole Long, it is, you might have to read that sheet, huh?
People are wondering why all of a sudden this seems new. Mark, uh, we reached out, we always want to make sure we do things the right way. And we found out that all donations coming into the district is supposed to have a resolution to it. So thank you. And then now that we found this, so.
Thanks, I think Mark should make the motion.
So going forward, we're gonna make sure all people know, all, especially our, we have the two found, the two groups that donate a lot, that they know that you guys have to approve the donation first.
Okay.
So we can make sure it's all appropriate.
Right.
And that was given to us by MSBA.
Is there anything like that we would have to retroactively approve things that?
I think we're just gonna keep going, going forward now that we uncovered a rock. We're gonna start doing it the way that they asked us. And we'll keep researching it, but we do have to have a two-thirds.
Yeah, two-thirds.
Have to say yes.
Right.
But if we could maybe move it somehow in consent with that letter, maybe we'll figure that out. But at first, we'll start this way and work through it. At least we're doing it the right way.
Okay, sounds like a plan.
I'll make the motions.
All right. Thank you, Mark. All right, Deb, all right. Okay, go ahead, Mark.
All right, um, the resolution to accepting donations. Whereas Minnesota statutes one twenty-three B dot zero-two subdivision six provides, "The board may receive for the benefit of the district bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefits of the district or for the benefit of pupils thereof, including trusts created to provide pupils of the district with advanced education after completion of high school in the advancement of education." And whereas Minnesota statutes four sixty-five point zero-three provides, "Any city council, school, district, or town may accept a grant or device of real or personal property and maintain such property for the benefit of its citizens in accordance with the terms prescribed by the donor. Nothing herein shall authorize such acceptance or use for religious or sectarian purposes. Every such acceptance shall be by resolution of the governing body adopted by a two-thirds majority of its members expressing such terms in full. And whereas every such acceptance shall be by resolution of the governing body adopted by a two-thirds majority of its members expressing such terms in full." Okay. Uh, therefore, be it resolved that the school board of McCray, uh, by and through twenty-one eighty, gratefully accepts the following donations as item, as identified below. Uh, twenty-one eighty foundation donated to donor board with the designated purpose of displaying donors and items purchased. Uh, the Emmanuel Luther Church Looney Luthers, uh, will donate proceeds from a production to community ed. And Highland Memorial will donate eleven trees.
Windbreak. I couldn't think of what to put, basically, the windbreak in Memorial.
And it's sex.
Yeah. Okay, you got any questions? We'll go ahead and vote and that's a voice vote. So Deb? Yes. Ben?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carmel? Yes. And I'm a yes as well. So that resolution is passed and adopted. So eight point O is upcoming meetings. You can see on the bottom there, we'll start with that truth and taxation on, on December eighth at six. And then we'll have that special meeting by before that. Okay, um, need a motion, would you? So, Carmel? I'll second that. Have a vote, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. We're during the seven-on-four. All right, thanks, everybody.